Commission for Emmitsburg. To start off with, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one issue, a doubt, and a visible justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda is review and approval of the minutes for January, January 30th. I mean, the commissioners have any comments, questions, anything about the minutes? If not, do I hear a motion for approval?
I motion that we approve the minutes.
Second, anybody?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 30th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes for January are approved. At this time, we have a space for any public comment from anyone in the public. Are you just waving or you want to? Okay. Good evening. So we have no public comment. Looks like we have no old business, so we'll move right on to new business. And the first item on the agenda is amendment of approved addition plat and request for final approval of the parcel A addition to lot five of section three. Bash lot five and lot four for Silo Hill located on Silo Hill Parkway. And I'll turn it over to the planner at this point.
Good evening. So the applicant, our leader of Leader Roy and Associates has proposed to add a parcel that is currently part of lot four to the adjacent lot five. So the planning commission approved a site plan for lot five back in 2021, which included a mixed use building featuring retail on the ground and a ground floor and hotel accommodations above. The owner decided to revise that approved site plan to only use a single story, single use retail building, which also would changes to parking configurations. At the time, the memo, the staff memo was written, the applicant hadn't submitted a final or formal site plan package. So only the addition plat is on the agenda tonight. And staff has also advised the applicant that they will have to return to the planning commission to obtain the approval of the final site plan or the revised site plan. But the addition plat that was provided to the planning commission for this meeting will have to be approved before the changes are implemented. Which will be, the site plans will be presented at the next planning commission meeting. Which included addressing the comments by the town engineer and including an access easement for lot four or provide explanation as to why it's not included in the current addition plat. And of course, provide new site plans which we have received already. And all some regular administrative requirements.
Okay, thank you, Najila. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the town planner? Comments? Would the applicant like to make any comments?
Good evening, commissioners. And good evening to the town officials. My name is Pradeep Saini. I've been in front of you numerous times.
Yes.
And this is an ongoing process in the past two years. So in giving you a little bit of background.
Your sound is muted.
Mine is red.
Mine is red too, yeah. So anyway, I was just saying, planning commission, I don't think has any authority to do that if you want to ask the pass a suggesting, suggestion on to the town manager and she is of course aware of that and it's administrative decision. But.
Sorry about that.
So as you, you heard Chris state that we normally don't weigh in on the fees. I mean, that's set in code. But I suppose we have the option to make a recommendation to the town clerk or the town manager, I mean. Commissioners have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, he's been in front of us numerous times at this point, representing as the plots kept re-dividing according to the bank's request. I, I think it's reasonable for us to make a request to the town that they remove the fee for this plat, you know, that doesn't have to submit it again, again. They don't have to do it, but it's a request from the planning board that we would like to see this done.
To waive the fee?
Yes, correct.
Any other thoughts, commissioners?
On the fee? Yeah, or anything?
I have a question regarding the next stage. Next month, the site plan, when we're presented with that. What are the next steps then before the applicant can break ground?
Well, from the town standpoint, the next steps are simply to issue the permits. We issue the permits when any public improvements are bonded. And the process then is administered by Frederick County, so. There's probably a public works agreement that may be required if there's any public work done. But there's administrative steps that don't involve the planning commission, but so there's, there's likely some steps involved after that. But mostly just administrative processing of paperwork and permits, bonding.
Okay. I do have a comment to make on that. Two months ago, I was asked to secure a bond for the public works that were going to be done outside and inside the parcel. We approached a bonding company, which has already worked with the town of Emmitsburg and which knows the process. They set up a bond and it was rejected by Ms. Kathy, although it was approved by, by Zach before he left. It was rejected because she spoke to Ms. Leslie and Ms. Leslie said that the bond cannot be given to the town of Emmitsburg. It needs to be first, the whole parcel, the whole building approval needs to be secured from the Frederick County. And after the building permit is approved, will the bond be accepted, which means if the bond is not kept in place, which is to ensure that we do, we, we do the work that we've promised to do and it covers town of Emmitsburg, it does not cover Frederick County. If the bond is not there, we cannot break ground because if the bond is not in place, we cannot start moving dirt, we cannot start any process. Which means I have to wait another two, three months or four months or six months, whatever it is, for the Frederick County to approve the building process. The bond is nothing to do with the building. The bond is everything to do with the sewer, the tap, the electrical power and whatever groundwork or site work we are doing. Why it is being conditioned upon the building process, the building has nothing to do with the ground. So this was another confusion that Ms. Kathy went back to Ms. Leslie. When I spoke to Ms. Leslie and I have email copies of that, Ms. Leslie said we can walk around it, but again, it came back that you need to secure a building permit. Building permit has not even been, not even been applied for because we don't have a zoning permit, we don't have an approval from town.
Right.
Which further delays it. So if I go to the bank tomorrow and I say, I need funds to break ground, they'll say, do you have the approval from town? The town is not approving because they are waiting for a building permit. And the building permit is taking six months, which means if I wait for six months to get the bond, I cannot go to the bank. So here I am applying for a building permit, they are working on it, they have an approval. After I get the building permit, I go to the bank. The bank takes another two months to evaluate everything, which means my year is gone. And here we are, I started this process in 2021, I'm in 2023 mid. And these are the ducks that I'm not able to keep in a row. And I'm trying to figure out how to overcome these red tape and this back and forth and newer conditions that keep coming up. I'd never heard that building permit was anyway involved in the bond process. And why it is now being included into that, it just does not make logical sense why a building permit is included in a town bond. It's a community bond. It's a, it's, it's for, it's for a municipality. It's nothing to do with the county. And I, I get no answers for that. So that's again, the process that is that is frustrating me with the, with the administration of town of Emmitsburg.
Okay, again, I'm, I'm hearing your frustration and I appreciate it, but I mean, our commission here has nothing to do with the bonding process and there's a number of things that we really don't deal with. It sounds like you have a number of things to discuss with staff. And, you know, you, you have been before us numerous times because you've changed things along the way for the past couple of years. I mean, things only come to us because you've changed your plans, so we can only deal with whatever you decide to do and bring to us. So again, I mean, we have your plat before us this evening, we can, I think we're going to go ahead and approve that, I believe. As a planning commission, there's not much else we can do for you here this evening, unfortunately.
Thank you for allowing me to vent.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate hearing that. And again, I'd encourage you to sit down and have a serious conversation with the staff, the planners and the town manager and really outline what needs to happen and when it needs to happen and make sure, you know, it all gets done in a timely manner. I don't know what else to do at this point.
Well, I appreciate your input and I'll definitely take care of that. Do you have any questions of me?
Just as we go forward, you already have the bank approval at this point for 60 days?
No, I, no, I don't. That expired and I can of course revisit it, but they require the amount of approvals that I don't have in my plate right now.
Any other questions for? No.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Thank you.
So regarding the plat, the commissioners have any other comments or questions about the plat that's been presented? Make a motion?
It's stuff, this is what, how did you want it's prelimin, it's, I know you didn't want preliminary, what's the language?
It's, it's written out there. At the top.
Okay. So I motion that we approve the additions of lots four and five as shown on the plan with the listed conditions.
It's listed in the staff memo. Will here a second for the motion? We have a motion by Kevin and a second by Valerie? Yeah. To approve the addition plat for lots four and five as shown in the plan with the following conditions as outlined in the staff memo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? It's unanimously approved. So let's get back to the fee that we were discussing a moment ago. Would we like to formally make a recommendation to the town manager to at least take another look at that and reconsider it?
I, I would like to make that recommendation just from a business friendly point of view for the, I mean, I know we can't approve it, but
Yeah.
I would like to make that suggestion.
No power here.
Right. It's just make a suggestion.
I don't know that we necessarily want to make a motion, but do we have consensus or any other thoughts from commissioners about that?
Would that? If, if if we proceed with that this evening, then it would go to the town manager. Would that ultimately come before the Board of Commissioners or would that be worked out of on an administrative front? The reason I ask is if we're doing any type of vote tonight, if it does go back to the board, I'll just go ahead and abstain this evening.
I don't think I can answer that question. I don't know.
Something new.
I think it's just a recommendation that it's general consensus. I don't know, needs a formal vote on it to go that far.
Okay. Thanks.
But, but I would also agree with Kevin that I think it's at least worth to have another discussion with the town manager to take another look at that and see if it can be worked out to to perhaps not charge that fee, but again, that's going to be up to the administrators.
Right.
So I'm just going to add just a kind of a personal note, but not exactly personal, but I recently was serving on the county executive's transition team and I was co-chair of the housing committee. And one of the recommendations that came from us for the county executive, it also came from several other committees. There were seven committees altogether in the transition team to look at the whole process for approving plans and permits and try to find a way that they work more smoothly and more timely. Now, we understand, you know, especially when we're talking about big developments, there's a big process you have to go through to really analyze what's going on, but you know, for something that's not too big, maybe it can be handled more efficiently and more timely and maybe with the administration just taking care of more stuff perhaps and not having to come back to the planning commission with every little thing, but you know, it's something that we recommended to the county executive and you know, I'm kind of saying maybe we could do that here perhaps. So I just wanted to share that with you, Pradeep. We're, we're, there are people that are kind of working on this now. Okay, then. Going to go on to our next item of business for this evening, the proposed work program for 2023, including discussion on updating the Emmitsburg comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Najila and I have been putting together a list of project or goals that the planning commission might want to consider taking on this year and then every year, perhaps we'd start the new year with a work program or maybe end the, the old year with a work program for the new year. Just so that we can focus on what priorities are because you know, your, your job is so much more than just reviewing development plans. In many respects, you are the disinterested, you know, objective, clear, clear eyed citizens of the community that look out for what's best for the entire community and you're in a unique position among any board or commission elected or appointed in the town. It's a very important role to play. And so by having a work program, program, we also communicate broadly to the community about what it is you're working on and what your priorities are. So we're not thinking that this is something that's locked in stone in a way that excludes taking on other priorities over the year. But these are things that we feel we have to do that will involve the planning commission. And there are a couple of things that perhaps you, we don't have to do, but we want to recommend you do. So let's go through the list and see where we go. So the first one would be the planning commission's annual report. An annual report is required every year and it's required by July 1st of the preceding year. So by July 1st, 2023, we have to deliver last year's annual report. And Najila and I were just talking about it today. So we have a draft from 2021 that we're going to work on and modify and kind of streamline things, but we'll get it to you and that annual report has to be approved by the planning commission, but that's it. It's then transmitted to the Board of Commissioners and transmitted to the Maryland Department of Planning. Neither of those bodies need to review it. They may review it hopefully, but they don't need to approve it. So it's your, it's your annual report. And you can say in that annual report, whatever you want to say, it's your opportunity to communicate to the residents and to the elected officials of Emmitsburg about what's important to you. There are specific things we have to include and that's per guidance and statute. But what we have to include makes up a very small part even of your past annual reports. So that's something we're going to think about how to integrate into your work program and get That's something we're going to think about how to integrate into your work program and get it done by, of course, by July first.
Okay.
Okay. We are required to update the FEMA floodplain mapping. And um, and as part of that FEMA wants us to update the uh floodplain management ordinance too. Uh FEMA, like any a- agency, federal or state, is continually refreshing the regulations and sending out model ordinances. And uh, so we'll have to strategically figure out what what is being changed and present them to you. But we don't have much flexibility with that. If you want the residents, property owners of the town to have flood insurance through the federal government's program, then we have to adopt the regulations and keep it active. We need to assemble a report on forest conservation fee and loop program and amend the forest conservation ordinance. And bringing them into alignment with state law. This actually came up recently with respect to rudders. Um, i- if the town has a fee and loop program, and it does. It now by virtue of a law passed in twenty nineteen has to send a report to the state on the. Structure and status of your fee and loop program and they have a review of that. Uh, presumably ours would check out just fine, but we have to check that box. And um, and then we have to modify the language of the forest conservation ordinance to make it comply with that twenty nineteen law. I don't think that's going to be a very complicated thing. I think we can combine that with other things with the maybe combined with FEMA floodplain that the regulations same night, but. The fourth bullet refers to the zoning map. We're actually working on that now. And um, we've completely overhauled the zoning map and we want to make it available, uh, post it up on the wall. Um, the official map that would be signed by the mayor so that everybody in the town knows where to go for the definitive. Uh, zoning of the town, where the boundaries are, and that then becomes the basis for any amendments. And amendments get made to that and we track that. So um, that's something we're going to, we're doing now. So. I probably even the spring will bring those maps to you for your approval. Yes, I mean, it's not for your approval, just for your your blessing, because we're not changing anything. There's no amendment.
That was my question. Nothing is changing.
Nothing's changing.
What what does it mean by improve? Just so it's more visually.
Yeah, so it's compelling.
Compelling.
And interesting. Hardly, but um, what we now have now is a a a map that is really hard for a lot of people to read because the colors seem to blur together. And it, we actually have, it's very small too and um. And the town planner needs a large format and one that she can use and throw tracing paper on and draw and and communicate to people that come to meet with her. But also we need one that's.